Let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order for our regular October meeting.
Yep, excuse me. Thank you.
On tonight's agenda, I'll just read it so everybody at home can know what we're going to talk about tonight. Item number one is the approval of the October 16th agenda, which is tonight. I forgot what today's date was, apologize. Two, approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 25th. We're going to have two guests tonight. We don't have either. I'll explain that in a minute.
[laughter]
We're going over the mail. We'll take public comment. And under other business, I want to talk about our last meeting. So that's the only thing I would like to add is to talk about some of the results of our September 25th meeting.
Move we adopt the regular meeting agenda for October 16th is presented.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's take a look at the minutes from that October 25th meeting, which are...
I apparently don't have them.
I don't have them either, I'm sorry.
They're not in your folder?
No.
Oh. Take a minute and make some copies. I apologize.
My fault.
And I just talked to Danielle, and she's doing a great job, but I asked her to send out a reminder, like the Thursday before, that we're having this meeting, because I lose track of them too, and also to attach a copy of the minutes.
I hope no reminder meant no meeting.
Yeah, I know. Sid did try and pull that one today. He did call me and go, "So, no meeting today." No, I didn't get a reminder. So why don't we... I'll tell you what we could do while we're waiting. No, we can't, because we need her to record it. So let's just take a break. She used to say in the Army, "Smoke 'em if you got 'em." Yeah. Sorry, Barbara.
Really? They said that?
Well, in WWII movies.
Oh, yeah.
Smoke 'em if you got 'em.
Oh, yeah. Vietnam.
They used to hand out cigarettes.
Oh, yeah.
Even when I was in the Army.
Yeah.
Little packs of four. Lucky strikes.
I didn't want you to be able to breathe while you were taking porch uphill, obviously.
I got to stay busy.
[sighs] That was to relax you before you took the ball. Yeah, that's exactly what it was, or what it was thought to be anyway, right? Yeah.
I remember doctors.
My doctors.
Advertising Chesterfields.
My doctor smoked right in the office growing up. Doctor Salisbury in North Adamas. So you'd go in, and my mom would be sitting there, I'd be a little kid, and he and my mom would be just puffing away right there.
Doctors used to tell pregnant women to smoke, because it would relax them.
Sure. It's a laxative, yeah.
And that the placenta just blocked everything.
Yeah.
Damn, government's always interfering with our plan here.
So let me talk about the guest thing. Danielle doesn't have to be there for that. So I didn't realize Michael Walker wasn't going to be here. I thought he was going to talk to us about our new email addresses for the town, like the Select Board is doing, and the DRB is going to have to do. And they want a group email, apparently. And so they've hired somebody to do that, who apparently will help us.
The instructions were sent to everybody.
Were they? Yeah. Okay, they could have been.
Since I'm on the Planning Commission and the DRB, I have two copies sitting on my desk, unread.
Lucky you. Unread too, yeah. Yeah, that's the thing. So Michael Batchor is just back from a 10-day vacation out west, and he's just waiting for just us to wrap up those 14 points and things. And as soon as he has that, he can come back with a draft that hopefully we'll be able to vote on next time and set...
On the energy element?
On the energy part of it, yeah. A draft of the energy section that we can vote on next time and get our public hearings established. So hopefully.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the plan, and I've learned generally that it doesn't take one meeting, it oftentimes takes two meetings. Thank you, Danielle.
Got one now, Barbara?
I do.
All right.
But I need another one. Thank you.
There's our spare.
Sorry.
Don't give it a thought. Don't give it a thought. Hey, you've got the code. You can turn off the alarm. That's all. That's the main thing here.
We're going to make her come first.
Yeah, I know. I thought I was doing so good. I forgot my keys. I had to go back and meet Jennifer. I still got here 20 of, 17 of, and I set off the alarm.
I'm going to follow you tomorrow.
I tried to blame Barbara.
It's her!
But I will talk to Michael Walker and tell him the people that have been issued keys probably ought to have a way of disarming this thing. Okay, let's take a minute and look at this. So as you guys are reading it, I see a couple of things that need correcting, and I think this is my fault, I talked you off. Under agenda, where it says upon motion of slattery/pechrel, the agenda, I didn't... I don't make... I ask for motions. I don't make motions unless it's absolutely necessary.
We did talk about it, I think.
Yeah, so I think Michelle made the motion. I'm not sure who seconded that motion to approve the agenda. You can certainly... Jim? Yeah, you know, it was kind of this... Michelle was here, I think, and you were there.
There was another one on the adjournment in the last page.
So, Mr... And there's one in the middle as well.
Did you make the motion on the municipal planning grant?
No, I didn't. That's what I'm getting at right now. And I don't know who did make that. I asked for a motion on it. Somebody over here, Shannon, I don't know if it was you. I don't know if it was you.
I can look and update it if you have it out.
Oh, you can look at the videotape.
I'll look at the video update.
Yeah.
I can do that tomorrow.
Could have been me again. Yeah, if you could, that would be great.
Yep.
So since we don't have the accurate information, I don't think we can approve these tonight until Danielle takes a look at them. So let's table these until the next time. They'll remain as a draft with the corrections, so that if anybody comes in and wants to see those, then this is perfect to write draft on it. That's absolutely right. Everybody agree with that? We should table it until the next meeting.
Concur.
You do concur?
I concur.
Okay. As long as you're not agreeing, just concurring. So the guests, I think I've explained that. I don't know where Mr. Walker is tonight, but I don't think we ever officially told... You probably told him he was on the agenda, and he told you he's going to a BLTC meeting or something.
I stopped in briefly today, and he just said... He didn't say anything while being on the agenda. He just said, "I am not going to make... I won't be in attendance at the meeting tonight."
Oh, okay.
Not that I am not interested, he said, but he has other priorities.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely fine. Absolutely fine. And I explained about Mr. Batchor. He really didn't have anything for us today. So he hasn't done any work on this energy section in the last several weeks. He's just waiting for us to finish up our part of it. And as soon as we do, he said, "Next meeting, you're meeting in November," which we should talk about if we're... When we're meeting in November with the holiday and stuff like that. So just remind me before we leave here that we'll take a look at the calendar, okay? But just, I think I explained to everybody that once our part of it's done, we should be ready to roll on that. Danielle, I didn't see any... I was here last Thursday. I didn't see much mail.
There's only, I believe, two things. There is a Strong Communities, Vermont Strong Communities email for downtown and village center tax credits, build stronger communities. I think it's just an article about that.
Okay. Pass that around. Go ahead, yeah.
And then...
I did get a copy of that, by the way.
And then there's a...
Oh, one Michael talked about.
Yep, the Emerald Ash Borer.
Preparedness.
Preparedness and management for Bennington County communities on Wednesday, November 14th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Arlington Town Hall.
Yeah, Mike gave us that information too. It might be very interesting.
It's just a flyer or a notification of that meeting.
See, I thought it was already here. When Michael announced that at our last meeting, I thought we'd already found evidence of it here.
I thought so too.
But apparently now that's official, that they found a couple of pretty strong evidence of it.
Do you know what they're doing about it?
Well, this happens to announce a training led by staff from the Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program to teach participants about our Emerald Ash Borer, introduce management options, and help towns assess risk and establish a plan. Participants will engage in an activity to strategize and approach... God, don't you love those buzzwords? ...to EAB management and will leave the training with action steps to take back to their community. The training is free, but registration is required, so if you want to get smart about Emerald Ash Boers, sign up.
What about town? I mean, we have foresters here, David Dentz Jr., I think, who is like the town forester or whatever that...
I think he's everything.
Yeah.
Measure of wooden bark.
Right.
Spring...
All of those.
Fence viewer.
Anything wood-related, yeah.
When I see whole wood, they're going to try and educate the people that bring firewood.
Well...
Well, at least ash makes really good firewood.
I hear...
But not imported from another community.
I hear that the birds are responsible for it, is the hauling of the wood.
More or less what Mike said last week.
Yeah. So, you know, we can prevent the hauling of the wood all we want, but unless we're taking care of the migration, it's going to be difficult. Anyway, serious thing.
Public service notices on the radio for years.
Yeah?
Not to bring firewood in camp.
Yeah, it's amazing. Jenny and I camp a lot in the state, and they still let you bring wood, not in, but as long as it's from Vermont. So if we're in Ponle today and we go camping up in, you know, the Northeast Kingdom, the state campgrounds still allow you to bring your own firewood. But if it was from Massachusetts or New York, and they ask you if they see it, and if you have plates that aren't Vermont plates, they will question you about where the wood came from and et cetera. So they are taking some steps, to be careful. It's just, it's nasty. It's killing a lot of trees. And apparently there's another blake that's killing other hardwood trees as well that could be just as bad. All right, anything else on the mail?
That was it.
That was it? We have number five here, moving right along, is public comment. Our member, the public, who now goes to every single meeting that the town has is pretty cool.
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
I happen to be in town right now.
I just kept bumping into you at these meetings. That's all.
And having been on the Planning Commission before, I take an interest in it.
So before I bring up a topic for the other business, I want to know if there's any other business that anybody else wants to talk about at this time.
Did we want to talk about a November meeting date?
Yeah.
Heck, yes.
So the third Tuesday is not till the 20th. Thanksgiving is that week, the 22nd. Do we want to meet on the 20th? I think we have a fair amount of work to do.
I'm out of town.
Yeah.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here as well.
I'm here.
Okay, regular meeting date, the 20th. Sound all right, Fred?
Should be.
Ronnie, you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. So we'll definitely set that date.
I might smell like buckwurst.
Yeah. You're only going to be here because it's going to be dark. It's going to be dark early. Don't be hunting in upstate anywhere. We need you here.
That's funny.
So let's talk about, you know, I thought about the last meeting a lot after we had it, and I think there was both confusion, was some misunderstanding, and some issues that I didn't think were issues. And in particular, you know, we voted on keeping the language the same in the municipal planning grant that had already... There were resolutions already passed to... For the town to move ahead with that. And Fred, I read some of your posts after in Ponle, past and present, which my wife is a member of, and you seemed pretty unhappy the day after that same night.
I was unhappy.
As did Michelle, by the way, but I'm going to give Michelle a chance to defend herself when she's back, so... But go ahead, please, if you want to talk about it.
Oh, you just asked me if I was unhappy about it. I was and I am. But, you know, we discussed it that evening. We took the vote, and that was it. And anything I said on past and present would be reflected in the recording of the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I didn't recall everything that I read in there. It seems to me like you thought things were rushed, like we didn't follow proper procedure and things like that.
Absolutely rushed. I would expect to have a hard copy of a document. If I'm... If we're talking about voting to approve it, we should have a hard copy of the document in time to read it and get our thoughts organized on it. I think that probably could have alleviated some of the stress from the situation.
Sure.
So, you know, going forward, that's what I would want.
From a procedural point of view, and that's partially my fault, because I didn't expect any vote on it that night, nor did I expect any vote on it, because we've never voted on them in the past. The Planning Commission is generally given the task of getting the town to apply for this. Planning Commission doesn't apply for it, the town of Ponle does. So Michael Batchor, two months before, said, "Hey, the clock is ticking. You've got to start thinking about a municipal planning grant. And now that you have your village designations, now's the time to go for it." So we didn't have a big window there. So in the past, I've done this now 13 years, we've applied for a lot of grants. There's no vote. There's a basic consensus that, "Let's try and get some of this money, and the town will match it, and we can hire a consultant to continue our municipal planning process." The reason that I asked for a vote that night was because when you read the grant and you saw Discover Ponle, you said, you know, "This shouldn't be in here. It's controversial." Mr. Walker didn't know that.
Right.
And he said to me, you might recall, "I'd appreciate it if you'd ask for a vote to approve this language and these partnerships." And that's when I did that. So, could you have gotten a copy of that sooner? Yeah, I'll take responsibility for that. I didn't think it was necessary. In essence, I guess the point I'm making is this town applies for many, many, many different kinds of grants, road grants, everything else. And people are empowered to do that. I didn't think, nor did I ever think, that it was something that required a vote, even with that controversial topic.
It doesn't sound like it would even require a review in that case, really. We shouldn't have put, you know, then you need it on the agenda, really, for us to deal with it.
Probably not, you know, and I think Michael is very careful at covering his bases on that stuff. In the past, you know who wrote those? Nelson. I mean, it was just, "Here, Nelson, we need one." Boom, he's off and running. And we never saw it again. We either got the money or we didn't, and most times. So with Nelson, we got the money, he did a good job of writing those. So if there was confusion, I'll accept responsibility for that. But there's also, I think, it has to be an element of trust whereby it's understood that if you guys want me to be chairperson, that I'll move ahead with certain things that I think, from a procedural point of view, don't require a vote or input or anything like... Input's always fine. I mean, although that whole grant application was online, he was working online. It was always there, and you should have been directed to it like everybody else, saying, "If anybody wants to look at this, the actual wording of it, it's online." The other thing is, if it's a lot more complicated now, much, much more, much more lengthy process with this outreach to community groups, to other municipal parties, that's new to me, that part of it. I didn't even give it a thought. I didn't give it a thought. I obviously don't feel the same way you do about Discover Ponle either, so I didn't even think about it. If you go back and watch the YouTube tape, when you said, "That's a very controversial subject," I turned to you and said, "Still?" You know? Not even about it.
The town is still divided.
Not even about it.
The town is still divided.
Apparently so.
Up until then, I've been, like I said, I've been enjoying working with all of you people, you know? Getting to know you a little bit better, you know? And actually feeling that we accomplished some good working together.
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm hoping we can...
Continue.
In the future, sure.
Keep up.
But, you know, there are going to be times where, you know, if something, let's say, pushes my button, I'm going to say something.
And you have every right to do that. You know, we don't, we're not asking for a Planning Commission with all similar political views. That's never been the goal. But what we are asking...
Just makes meetings go faster.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it would make things go faster, get you over... No, I'm kidding. But just to have some unity on those discussions. In other words, when I asked for that vote, it was seconded, my next line, my next line, not a line, that's not a line, was, "Is there any further discussion?" I looked at you, you didn't say anything. Michelle didn't say anything. I found the further discussion later in social posts. People send them to me, because I don't read that stuff. People go, "Did you see what Fred said, Michelle said, and what happened at that meeting?" You know? And I'm like, "Holy mackerel."
And that's a problem that we, as a community, have. We've had it for going well over a year. There's two sides, and they're clashing in opposing views and opposing sides, okay?
Sure.
Whether we can heal that, probably not quickly, but we can heal it.
I think we can.
I think. But we're going to have to, you know, go through these moments, I think, where they happened.
Where could I find the social media where these posts are made, so I can read them?
Well, I have them. I thought it would be helpful for myself in thinking about this. I didn't print it all out, but I printed a couple of them, because I agree with Fred, since we're on the same Planning Commission now, I feel like we get to know each other face to face, and I don't have any animosity towards you. And I actually found it hurtful after that meeting had already come to an end, and we had voted on that process going forward, and we had clarified that really it was our town administrator asking for a letter of support and involvement. And so I went to the hand. And to see these posts after that, up on Ponle Past and Present, to me, is hurtful because it makes me feel like, okay, does this mean that this is just going to continue on? And even though now we're on the Planning Commission together, that you're still going to be saying this stuff behind, you know, behind the scenes on a...
It's an open forum.
No, words have meanings.
Yeah, yeah, sure they do.
Words like conflicts of interest and things like that. I think that's a tough road for a town official to be going down on social media, rather than coming to his commissioner board and walking it over.
Fred was going to give an explanation, won't he listen?
I apologize. Sorry.
Yeah, well, actually, you know, whatever thought I had is actually in my head, so I don't... I really don't know what else to say on that, on any of this.
I mean, I would just, I guess the main thing that I'm wondering, I understand, I really do, I mean, I feel like I heard them, we talked about them a lot, about the concerns about Empower Ponle, which was a year ago, and which was facilitated by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. Now, Discover Ponle is different. I mean, that is a group of Ponle citizens working on these four different committees, and you've said that you don't have a problem with them. So I'm wondering why that's controversial? Why does it continue to be controversial to you?
It evolved from the Empower Ponle thing, which was divisive in town. It didn't intend to be divisive, but it turned out to be divisive in town, okay? And I am not on board with any of it yet, myself. I'm trying at times, not always, but I'm not on board with it. And I don't want to, I don't want to have my, anything that has anything to do with me showing approval or any, in any way putting it forward. I don't want to be attached to it at all.
Okay. I guess I just don't see how that's working towards you.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not, I'm not going to be the only one doing the work, okay?
Can, I'm really confused. Can you tell me what it is about the Empower Ponle that was a problem?
What was a problem? It's going way back here.
Well, if I may, I can tell you what Mr. Jarvis had a problem with, and it was smart growth and climate economy.
Yep.
And those words being part of the goals of Empower, or the VCRD, coming to towns and trying to facilitate...
I have more of a problem with VCRD. Driving anything in, not just this community, rural community, but any rural community in this state.
Sure.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Because it's state-generated?
And it's from, I think it's urban, urban-generated, coming after rural towns, telling rural towns, "You have to improve this, this, or this." You know? They don't, they have nothing to do with being a rural town. They're urban, and they're coming up with the rules that we all have to jump through the hoops to take care of for them, for why. You know, I guess that's my question, why?
So I could see that.
Maybe you'll have a hand in resolving that if you get elected.
We can try.
It seemed to me, I'm not as closely involved, and was only for a short time in the steering committee, it seemed to me that when some of those things were voiced, not just by you, but by other people as well, that I never saw any evidence, it never came to fruition. They didn't tell us we had to do anything. They made suggestions, they offered channels of communication with other potential Vermont agencies or private sector in a variety of things, farm, energy, a lot of things, that I know that a group had some problems with the energy part of it, even economic development part of that. But I think the smart growth thing is the thing that bothered most people. And, you know, I looked at the communication that went out with that petition that was signed, and it's pretty blatant about how it's designed to promote village development in essence, and have people have to move out of their rural properties to the village. Those words were actually part of that. That gets a little tough for me to take that. That's more inflammatory than based on any fact. No one has ever shown me any evidence in the entire state where that's happened, ever. So...
Again, the question, is it designed by the rural communities themselves, or is it designed by the urban communities?
Right. Yeah.
You know, to do a little arm twisting, and, you know, "We're sick of, we're sick of paying all the taxes in this state, so we're going to make sure these rural towns grow up a little bit and pay their taxes, and we're going to pay them, we're going to put sidewalks in them, we're going to do all this stuff to make sure they pay their part, give up that whole rural thing, you know? Cut down some trees and, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing I saw, though, was that none of that came out of the initiative here in Ponle, that they said, "This is your deal. What do you guys want to work on?"
Their process.
What do you wanna work on?
It's like, uh, you're like going into a restaurant, you're given a menu, you're gonna buy something, you're, you're gonna decide with dot votes what you're gonna buy.
We added to that menu. We added a lot of things to that menu.
I keep saying this, I'm just gonna say, you know, the four things that everybody chose that day with their dots, and their no dots, and their fake no dots, were, um-
You gotta bring that up.
Supporting farms, supporting small businesses, conserving our environment, cleaning up our environment in Pownell.
We could have done all that without, without VCRD.
And recreation. But you know what, I'm telling you, Fred-
But we had, but we had-
No, we hadn't.
But we could have.
And, but you know what was great? Is that they actually connected us to people, some of whom are really close by, like the Bennington Chamber came to some of those meetings.
They could, they could have done that, they could have done that without designating sleepy little town of Pownell as the first model climate, um, climate-
We had a live forum. We were one of three.
Yeah.
To me, it was-
And second time they were, second time they were here, so I'm sorry.
Well, and I just, I mean, I actually agree with you that I don't really like the language. I don't think they, I don't think it was good language. But I was like, hey, these are free resources, it's gonna help us to come up with more ideas, and it has. And I'm telling you that those four groups now, we are panel people, we are not the VCRDs.
Like I told you last, at the last meeting, I had no animosity to any individuals, any individuals whatsoever.
Right. But you keep bringing up the VCRDs, and it's not a part of what we're doing anymore.
No, no. But we're, we're talking about the origin, the origin of all this mess, okay, that we're in, was that, was that.
I don't, I don't see it as one.
No, he means divisive issues, the conflict.
It's a mess.
In town.
Can I, can I make it?
I, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna call on you, please, go ahead.
I was part of the first VCRDC. Is that the right letters?
VCRD.
Yeah, okay. Um, and, you know, it was wide open as to what we volunteered as a community, and one of the outcomes of that was the front porch forum, which has been a vehicle for the communications that have happened, you know, both good and bad in terms of feeding things, but actual communication.
Correct, yeah.
And that, that tool probably would not exist had the, had the Rural Development Group been supporting it in the communities that they went to, and, and, you know, saying, not promoting it and saying you have to do it, but saying, "This is now something that's available in the state of Vermont that we probably wouldn't have known about." And, and Pownell was one of the first six communities to get on board with that. Um, I think that's all I was gonna say.
So I, the thing, the point I'm trying to make here is that, no, I don't think, I'm not, my goal is not to change your mind politically or what you believe in regarding VCRD or Empower Pownell. I, I wish I could help you with Discover Pownell, it's a good group of people. But don't ever feel you can't come and talk to us about it, however divisive you think it might be. I'd rather it be talked about here than going back and forth on social media. I saw some people fired up who had no facts responding to some stuff that you and Michelle put on there. And that was, that was the toughest part for me to watch.
Again, what was put on there was from, from the recording, from the meeting.
Subsequent responses from other people, Fred, not you guys.
I'm, I'm pretty careful with my subsequent responses, you know?
Yeah. Some other people got the wrong ideas. In fact, you know, one of them could be easily taken that the grant would cost us all money here like it's coming out of our local pockets.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even call-
Well, it wasn't you. And the other one was that the bylaws would be changed to then facilitate changing the floodplain planning, and then get FEMA involved, and the Agency of Natural Resources, and shut down mobile own parks.
That's where everything in this town has become so, so muddy. It's been, it's not, I don't think it's been about one issue. It's, it's been a whole bunch of things coming up all at once, and people are, you know, rightfully nervous. People, especially living in the floodplain, they're nervous, you know? They don't know what's, they don't, because, because it's, it's government now. It's not, it's not the neighbors that they know, you know, telling them they're gonna help them. It's, it's government telling them they're gonna help them.
But I think there's, I think their, I think their fears are being fed and exacerbated by some of the stuff that's floating around.
It could be, and it's because we, we have, we have this, we have this, um, division in, in the town. And, and people, people are free to say what they want, or, or what they believe.
People should, but people should have facts.
Absolutely, yeah.
So-
We're all entitled to our own views, but we're not entitled to our own facts.
Oh, yeah.
I thought we had a good select board meeting last week. I came and, and read a statement, and there were some other good statements. Um, it, it almost like was a little glimmer of healing. There was almost like, uh, we have to find a way to work together. Can't we all get along, and stuff like that. Um, Amy Silver recommended some sort of mediation. I'm all for that. I'm all for sitting and listening and, and really getting to the bottom of this stuff, but at the same time moving Pownell forward. So in essence, li- listening, appreciating, respecting, but moving forward together somehow, whether we win votes, we lose votes, however it happens.
I think the question's always gonna be, how far forward does Pownell want to move?
Big part of the discussion, Fred, big part of the discussion. I agree, I agree. I have people on my planning commission.
We're designing an energy plan, uh, our, um, a big part of our, um, new town plan is built around renewable energy. We're doing that because it's been mandated that we do it, okay?
Recommended.
Well, pretty much, with the arm twister in there, yeah.
Encouraged.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, yeah, like if you want more state money.
So, you know, if that's, you know, again, that big, big government decided this is gonna happen in, in small towns.
Yeah.
So we gotta, we gotta adapt to it. Um, and these are unfunded mandates.
I disagree with you on that.
We have to add, we have to add personnel, we have to add to our budgets because of all of this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, and people have a right to be, and, and it's right, it's right for them to be concerned.
The, what the town hopes is that you're offsetting by being energy efficient in your municipal buildings and things that you're offsetting the cost of, of doing that. Both sides, right? That's tough. I, I, I think goals to be 90% free of fossil fuels by 2050, impossible. They're not gonna shut a town down because they didn't make that goal. I firmly believe that. It's not gonna bother me, I'm gonna be 98 years old anyways, if I make it that far. But we get to decide our own stuff. We have to play by some rules. A lot of those I don't like myself, but I recognize this is the state we chose to live in, this is the town we chose to live in. If we wanna keep the lights on, and the school going, and, and everything else, we, unfortunately gotta play by some of those rules, so. Once again, anything you need, come forward, don't hesitate, please.
Paper copies of whatever we have, whatever we're gonna discuss, I need, I need, I don't, you know, email is great, I don't read stuff online.
You can do that.
It'll drive you, it'll drive you nuts.
Well, my, I used to be that way too, but then I'd have papers stacked up like this, and I, now I read it and erase it.
Ink on paper is, I love it.
Okay.
As much as fossil fuel, Fred loves fossil fuel.
I like fossil fuels too.
I like fossil fuels.
I, I've never heard that. I've never heard you say that before. I'm a fossil fuel guy.
I am, totally. You're not gonna get the BTUs out of anything else that you get out of oil.
That's right. That's right.
I, I do, I will say this about Empower Pownell. Empower Pownell, I think is a very unfortunate choice of name, because people were just starting to wake up when solar fields started going in. And it's like, oh, you know, all of a sudden this is happening, the, the tops of, the mountains getting blown off for windmills up in Searsburg. We're, we're aware of that, we see that. Then we see, we see the solar fields going in, and then we, we, then we end up with the Power Pownell. So I think it, it, it-
So if it were Discover Pownell back then, you'd be okay with it?
It might, well, definitely, it didn't have that word, uh, power in it, which was like-
Were we at the library when we did this?
Yeah, there was a steering committee that-
We sat there and we, we found six names.
Holy mackerel.
We were loading it, it's all over.
And all of a sudden, someone, I think we got bored with passing names around, and the last one was Empower Pownell, so that's okay.
I don't think anybody said-
I wish we had copies of the minutes.
It was Priscilla who came up with that name.
Yeah. I mean, we just kept, we just kept throwing in a word, throwing in a word, what are we gonna call this thing, what are we gonna call this thing? And there was the last one, it's, let's go with it.
It was time to go home. It was definitely, it was, that's, literally, Fred, that's how we got, we came up with that on the steering committee.
But then, the next thing people know in this town, there's, there's a big community meeting, and you're gonna choose some initiatives, and you got Big Brother is hosting the meeting, it's facilitating the meeting, and it's like, you know, things are feeling out of control for people.
I still believe they're a nonprofit organization.
And people get, anger is a secondary emotion, it really is. When people are, are starting to feel concerned, upset, that's when anger starts happening.
I was at a meeting 10 years ago, when they came to town, and sitting at a meeting, can we get a place? I said, "Get you a Legion."
Yeah, got the Legion.
Get you some food, fair cooked food, uh, except, wasn't, everybody that didn't know anybody a lot of times in Pownell, and I recognize this, they came together and met each other, had something to eat, talked about some things, got at tables, talked about some committees. So the second time they come around, after 10 years, who was afraid of them? It wasn't a big bad wolf to us, it was just Costello and his gang coming to town. We're all going down there and getting a table.
That was the very first meeting I ever went to in Pownell.
They are former, uh, government officials, and they now choose to work for, um, a nonprofit organization that goes around and does this thing.
So I still don't understand why there's so much worry about it. I, I don't get it.
I think it's resentment about the way it was brought in more than worry about it. I don't think Fred's worried about the four initiatives that have come out of that, and the good things that have happened. Bob Jarvis isn't. He was, he was very vocal about it.
So what's the deal? Why does it keep going?
Ask Fred.
I don't know.
I'm not, don't ask me, I don't keep it going.
I'll give you my opinion, which you probably don't wanna hear, but I'll give it anyway.
Give it, give it.
A lot of people are resistant to change.
Yes, they are.
A lot of them. So when you throw change at them, first of all, they're suspicious of it. And second of all, like, they had these meetings and stuff, I don't know what they drew for a crowd there, but it was just like town meeting. You have town meeting, what do you draw? You don't draw flies. And it's, and you're talking about the town, you know? I mean, it's, uh, but there's a lot of people who just like the way things are. They like the sleepy little villages and this and that.
We found that out in the town plan.
And they're afraid of this stuff.
Yeah. We found that out right in the town plan, Rodney, that's a great point.
I mean, and, and then it starts to get into this, uh, the bitterness of personalities after that.
Yeah.
Now, social media, you could throw all that away. You got something to say, you come to a meeting-
It runs the, it runs the world.
I know it does.
But that's my point exactly, is that we gotta communicate, you know, we gotta sit down and hash it out, roller sleeves up, is the, is the thing. And, um, I, I think we'll all be better off for it, so. Well, did you write all that down? It's everywhere. We got 42 pages.
Can I ask a question in terms of-
One more from the public here.
In, in terms of social media, what you were just saying, is there, and, it sounded like there's conversations going on prior to decisions being made, and then there's conversations going on after decisions are made. Is there an understanding that the body that makes decisions, whatever your vote is on that decision, then publicly supports that decision, or is that not an understanding of the bodies in town?
Under the open meeting law, we are supposed to make decisions here.
Right.
We're not supposed to communicate about them beforehand.
Right.
And set it up.
Yeah, okay.
And we're not supposed, you're not supposed to-
No, we don't.
You're not supposed to communicate in other than a public forum, which is the danger of social media, because it's all secretive.
A publicly warned, properly warned public forum.
We're supposed to sit here in front of a TV camera and say what's on our mind.
Well, and that's the other thing, I mean-
And that's where the votes have to get taken.
Right.
People are free to join any, certainly any municipal planning thing. I mean, come, come to these meetings, you know, it's, it can be really boring. I have friends say to me, "I don't know how you do it." Uh, it's, it's boring. You know, they watch it on TV, which shows prove they, they have no life.
They have no life at all.
Either. But, you know, if it's controversial things, and we're talking about that, I thought we got through the town plan very well. I mean, I really did. There was a lot of changes we made and a lot of good recommendations.
A lot of wrestling.
There was, there was. But good wrestling, healthy stuff.
That's where we started to get to know each other while we were wrestling with this stuff.
Made a difference.
Well, it, it always seems to me like if you're talking about real things, like, um, you have to do when you're on a planning committee, doing a plan, you have to think about what it really is, that those are easier to talk about and discuss than this sort of innuendo and accusation and fear, or whatever else is going on.
I, I said to the, to the select board the other night, you really, in emails and posts, you don't always get the whole story. You can't sense emotion or, you know, feelings and-
Email is a blunt instrument.
So it's a blunt instrument as well, and I might take an email wrong from Barbara, that she had her intention of it being funny, and all of a sudden we're off and running. So those are tough. And then, don't forget my rule, Rodney heard me the other day, no posting after cocktail hour.
No thought, yeah.
Sorry, Jimmy, go ahead.
No, but a lot of times when I go home, my wife will ask me, "What's going on with me, what'd you do tonight?" You know, I said, more than once, I say, "You don't know." A lot of times I go to these meetings and both sides are right. You sit there in a meeting and you be-
That's a tough one.
No, it isn't. A lot of times most people are right. You know, if you put yourself in issues.
That's right. If they're honestly motivated, you're actually-
And we generally hang our politics on the coat hanger and come in here, that's a rule. And I'll say, "Well, if, right, she was right, and we've just had a good meeting," and then you get a show of hands, and that's democracy.
And hopefully there's a compromise.
Everybody's, they're half-assed right in their own world. I lived in Pownell enough to know what you guys are saying. And I hear people, I, I've been across from the two parks for 40 years, I know their fears, and, and there's fears everywhere. And it's, it's a sad time, but a lot of times at these meetings, both sides are right, to some degree. And then you have to make a decision, you get a show of hands, and it's not always pleasant.
But you have to figure out-
A winner and a loser sometimes, but I think we're all winners in, in, in democracy.
Oh, yeah.
This, this town's not that bad.
The best system we got.
We've gone through a lot of turmoil over the years, and fought a lot of battles.
Well, yeah, it's not just us.
But now, but today, we're kind of-
I think it'd be hard to trust a commission or a board that was in full agreement on everything at all times. It's like, I would like, I'd, I'd be selling my house.
That'd be a rigged system, right? No, and that's never happened, fortunately, on a planning commission in my 13 years. Well, thanks for sharing that. It's much appreciated. And Rosemarie, thanks for your input, and everybody else.
I, I have a question that's not related to this conversation.
Okay.
But in anticipation of the meeting next week on the town office.
Yes.
Since you're familiar with village designations and gaining that, is that designation affected at all if we have a town office outside of a village area?
I, I don't have any reason to believe that it would be, but I could look into that.
I don't know what determines the village area.
Village areas, uh, have certain components, the meeting places, churches, sometimes town or office buildings, sometimes, certainly fire departments, other places where people can get together for the community good. And a village has a lot of those.
Yeah.
Mixed use usually-
It doesn't have to have everything.
No.
So it doesn't have to have the town.
Mixed use, and it should have the ability to generate some economic benefit for the overall town, right? I mean, you, you remember that, and the goals of the, the village designation.
Does that question have a vote, or the-
Well, yeah, 'cause we're gonna, uh, you know, there's gonna be a presentation, I think it's just on one proposal next week, but there are other proposals on the table.
Well, certainly there, there'll be consideration.
I was wondering if there are properties, if, if we were to go with a property that was outside of the village designation, it would impact-
I don't think it hurts the village designation.
I think you can put the municipal building anywhere, sure, within the municipality, as long as, they probably can override the bylaws too. I don't, I don't know. They gotta come, do they, does our own municipality have to come before the DRB? Get a variance?
I didn't mean to open up a candle.
Oh, that's all right, we'll figure that out. It's a good question. Um, listen, if there's, um, at, at quarter of, if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Uh, any more discussion? If none, all those in favor of adjourn, say aye.